...border. Today is October 6, 2025. The time is now 6:00 PM. If we can all rise for our invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in service of our community. Grant us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we make decisions tonight. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
If you'll stay standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Ramirez? Velasquez? Ayala?
Here.
Ochoa?
Here.
Pantoia?
Here.
Rickoff?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Here.
Speaking of Johnson, if Melanie would like to go to the front with Ms. Johnson for the oath of office, which will be done now and then again in a month.
Will you raise your right hand, please? And repeat after me. Eyes state your name.
Hi, Carly Johnson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado?
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the codes and ordinances of the City of La Jolla?
And the codes and ordinances of the City of La Jolla.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Councilmember?
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Councilmember?
Which I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
At this time, it's time for your speech, Carly. All right, I don't see anyone from Tiger Theater here. Are they here? Did I miss them? No. So I'll keep them right there, and if they show up here a little bit later, I'll pull them up. So now we'll move to citizen participation. Please state your name and your address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Sure that's all for you?
Okay.
All good?
Yes, sir.
All right, my name is David Polly. I lived at 622 Colorado Avenue, up in the top apartment before the fire. So we're a little bit depressed, or depressed, displaced here. But I came to talk tonight about that. And I was a fireman in my youth in the forest service. And so the things I wanted to talk about were the things that I am expert in: fire behavior and tactics, you know, on a fire. Not tactics as far as, you know, the equipment and things like that, but the fire itself. And my observations, I was also trained as an arson investigator, as an observer. And so I had some observations. And I watched the fire chief at his meeting on the 15th, I believe. And so one of the things that they said first was that there was a tree fire, and there was no response because they were on the medical call. And the fire chief said that we had 15 paid firefighters. Four of those guys were on the call with the police officers. That leaves 11 paid, salary-paid firefighters that are there to answer the call when it comes in. And with that, they could have done an evaluation on the tree fire. The tree fire itself, fire behavior, there's three things that make a fire. There's fuel, there's heat, and oxygen. Take any one of those away, and you've stopped the fire. In the forest service in the old days, you probably remember this. They say, "Don't leave any campfire unattended." The fire will seek after fuel, and it's going to grow. And that's exactly what we had. So when the fire chief arrived at 7:00, 10:00, or 10:00 after 7:00, we went from a tree fire to a full-on structure fire. And the fire chief has also not released the 911 calls, times, or citizens' names. We really can't tell, because I have a lot of neighbors that tell me they called earlier, and we don't have any real proof of that. And I'd like to talk about tactics now. Back to the fire, the three things that make fire. There's fuel, there's oxygen, and there's heat. Take any one of those away, we've stopped a fire. Fire Chief Brad Johnson allowed the fire to burn out. That is, that he did not attack the fire in oxygen or in heat. He just allowed the fuel to end itself. So imagine if you had a trash can, and it was on fire, and he just left the contents burn inside the trash can. They set up a perimeter on the east side of the fire on Colorado, and we didn't attack the fire in the back or the alley. I don't know why. But the fire chief did say why. He said that there were different tactics, special tactics and special decisions. Unusual things Chief Brad Davidson said and did. And this is all on the CECO News. Fire Chief Davidson said that the fire burned for 10 to 15 minutes before anyone noticed. Not being there, how could he know that? He described the place where the fire started, but then he said that it burned for 10 or 15 minutes before anybody could see it. He wouldn't know that unless somebody was telling him, or if he was there. Another thing he said that was interesting is it's on our calendar. And my question is, how do you know the date and time of a fire unless you're involved in it? But you guys all agreed that it was on your calendar when he said that. He made you as being on.
So when he said it was on the calendar, he didn't mean it was on the calendar for it to catch fire? That wasn't what he meant by it was on the calendar. It was on the calendar, or on our radar, on our calendar for it to be torn down? It had nothing to do with scheduling a fire, a structure fire, sir?
Well, he didn't say that.
Does he? Sorry. Your meeting's on.
It's your time, and you're going to get another minute now, so.
Okay. Anyway, the fire burned around 1,900 degrees. This indicates that there were accelerants involved in that fire. House fires generally burn between 1,100 and 1,500. They can get a little hotter in the ceiling. There was an east wind blowing at about 8 miles an hour, according to the fire chief, on that day. The heat moved west and melted a car and siding. Gas meters melted, and it also blew out windows. The fire did not move west. It moved east into the building, into the vacant building. And this is not normal for fire behavior, and it indicates that there were accelerants. In other words, the fire is going to burn on the easiest way it can, and there was something drawing that fire in there. The fire chief set up on the east side and did all the firefighting from there. He did not do anything on the alley sides where the fire was burning. And how would he know that the fire would go against the wind and burn to his location? So in other words, we have the fire and the trash in the back.
Then it's your time, Mr. Polly.
I'm sorry, what?
That's your time.
Okay. For my closing, if I can.
Briefly. Briefly.
I submitted to the FBI this morning suspicion of arson, and there is a tip line. And that is, I've got a phone number, and that number is 303-629-7171. And you can go through the prompts on that, and the prompt will send you and ask for what you're tipping about, and that is the fire at 618 Colorado Avenue, La Jolla. Also, I talked to the Sheriff's Department down here, and they are able to receive tips locally and forward those on through law enforcement to them. And that is at the Otero County Sheriff's Office. Their number is 719-384-5941. If anybody wants any more information on what I know, I'm happy to give it to you. My name's David Polly. My number is 719-492-0913.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen participation?
Hello. My name is Angela Ayala. I live somewhere over there on the 1,500 block of San Juan Avenue in La Jolla. I wanted to talk to you all this evening about tarantula fest. When I first stepped into help with the tarantula fest, I had no idea what it could be, what it would look like, what it would become. It started as a simple effort to celebrate our spiders in our area, and it has turned into something that's quite unique, that has drawn lots of people from all over. This year's festival was definitely proof of that. I just wanted to publicly give a huge thank you to the City of La Jolla, our amazing community, and the Tourism Board. Their support teamwork and their hometown pride was very evident during the tarantula fest. And they are the reason that the tarantula fest is what it is today. I can make a call to any of my linemen who were dropping electric trailers for me on Friday. Martin at the engineering office in Maryland, they had our trash situation all taken care of. I mean, everybody was all hands on deck, and I appreciated the effort so much. There wasn't anyone who, you know, everybody was trying to simplify our lives, and I really, really appreciate that. In case you didn't know, National Geographic has spotlighted La Jolla quite a bit since our tarantula fest. Not that we needed to be on the map anymore, but we certainly are now. So from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank everybody in this community for supporting the La Jolla Tarantula Fest. The Tourism Board, my family, they helped out quite a bit. And just say thank you, and I look forward to a bigger and better festival next year. Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you guys for all you do.
Anyone else for citizen participation?
Erica Gladley, 213 Lewis. Yes, I watched it grow, so I want to say yes. It's incredible to see it go from nothing to something. I'm coming more in, I live out, it's called the east side of La Jolla. And I had a question or two in regard to when you're thinking of renovation and you're thinking of things that you're doing. I know that the walking trail collapsed due to a concrete issue and a flood over on what I call east, I'm a call west. And I was wondering if you had ever considered where the ball field is over out on the other side of town? Gosh, I can feel my voice shaking, and I'm usually not nervous whatsoever. The idea of, I know there's, people are concerned about the homeless population. People are concerned about drugs, all the things that are going on. I am wondering if you've ever considered this idea of how you could create some sort of loop? And this idea of using the east side of town outside of where the baseball field, which is very well-used over where the water department is? Or the, I guess it's the school that used to be over there? This idea of how you could make a bike trail and/or trail that's used that goes all along that ravine on the other side? It's up higher, it's not low, water won't wash out. It's this idea of taking something away, bringing them together so that people could take a full loop around La Jolla. And it would also then possibly help with the homeless population. It would help with people camping out. It would help with people over in the area. And there are communities on that side of town. Goes all the way up to Brash, goes all the way over, I guess, what is it? Inspiration Fields. So this idea of something to consider when you're thinking of new things for the community, it would help everybody, I believe. You could even cross over and go up into North La Jolla. And I had a cousin that just did that bike ride, where he went all the way down, what is it, 96, 196? He did that 50-mile bike ride. So that idea, it was used, and that was a fundraiser for our valley. That's all, just a certain idea. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
You got it.
Anyone else for citizen participation? If I were to see you back then, I'd have you pray for us.
That's all right. My name is Lynn Tab. I'm the pastor at the United Methodist Church, and I wanted to invite you all to our celebration at the end of the month, October 26, Sunday afternoon at 1:00. Our church buildings have been placed on the state and national registers of historic places, as well as city. And thank you for your support of that. So I'd like to invite all of you to join us for that celebration. There'll be a lot of music, and there will be a lot of information given to you about the history of our buildings. And then we'll have an ice cream social afterwards. So I just want to share that with you, and thank you all for your support of our endeavor, and invite you all and the public as well.
What time is that at?
1:00.
1:00.
And what's the address?
601 San Juan Avenue.
And save the date one more time?
October 26, Sunday afternoon. It should all be over in time for Broncos kickoff at 2:30. I'm just saying.
Well planned.
Michael is looking forward to that.
Looking forward to Broncos.
Anyone else for citizen participation? Going once, going twice. All right. Perfect timing for LJHS Theater, who is just getting here. Thank you, ladies, for showing up. Please state your names and what you're here to talk about this evening.
Good evening. Our names are Gianna Ayala and Maranatha Hoyt. I am a freshman, and Maranatha's a senior. And I go to La Jolla Junior Senior High, and she goes home. We are members of the La Jolla Junior Senior High School Tiger Theater, and we are here to invite you all in our community to our production of Beetlejuice Junior. We are a cast and crew of junior and senior high students from across the valley. We're kicking off our season with our fall production of Beetlejuice Junior, the musical. The musical, the musical. The production is directed by Desiree Goke and assisted directed by Tracy Salzbriner and Molly Borton, with the help from Courtney Ayala, our stagecraft class, and a local dance instructor, Reyna Reese.
Beetlejuice Junior is a frighteningly funny musical based on the beloved motion picture. Lydia Deets is a strange and unusual teenager, still grieving the loss of her mother and obsessed with the whole being dead thing. Lucky for Lydia, she and her mother moved to a new house haunted by a recently deceased couple at Beetlejuice, a delightful demon with a real zest for life. When Lydia calls on Beetlejuice to scare away anyone with a pulse, this double-crossing specter shows his true stripes, unleashing another world of pandamag.
Production dates are October 23rd and 24th at 7:00 PM and the 25th at 2:00 PM. The runtime of the show is approximately 1 hour and 15 minutes. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased at the door beginning at 6:30 PM and 1:30 PM on show days.
We encourage you and your families to come and support our performing arts program. Thank you for your time and commitment to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Miss Libby, if you've come to the front.
Can I go over this real quick because it's more for the public? All of you guys are pretty informed. This year, we've had a couple of changes to the budget. It is posted online as well as the changes. But the biggest change from the one we talked about was that we received the $1.9 million PFOS money. I'm not going to explain what PFOS is, because it's somebody else's job. But that $1.9 million was budgeted as other income in the 2026 budget. Therefore, we got it this year. We needed to make changes to next year. Those changes are on the last page of the budget, which is posted online. With that said, there will be a supplemental coming before you for the 2025 budget for that $1.9 million. Any questions?
Was that the only one? Was it theirs? Was that all that was being changed?
Say that again.
Was that all? I thought there was two items.
It was, no, it was the water and the wastewater. The $1.9 million was split 50/50 between water and wastewater. And so half of it went to water, half of it went to wastewater. And then there were the changes in the general fund, and I've also listed that. This is the second time in 20 years I made a revised budget that you can get online. Just got a little too complex.
I think the other changes that you were talking about were the ones that were made prior to the public hearing, based on the...
And we got them that night.
Yeah, the highway, the...
The highway reserves with police officer, the increase in capital. Those were already mentioned. But I did, those are included in this revision. I only made enough copies for Betty and you guys. Everything else is online for the public to go and look at.
So the salary, the amended salary, that's the police officer that we...
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't want you to have to find that piece of paper. That's why I put it on the cover.
I appreciate it.
And it also allows you to put both your budget books together and look at them. So, yeah, when you see salary benefit, FICA, group, insurance, work comp, police state, all of that, those 10 line items are just one salary.
Do you want to go over PFOS at all, or you're good?
It's a chemical that is...
Forever chemical.
Stuff that is bad for you, but my understanding is it's so minute that...
We'll bring Tom in next time. He explained it to me very detailed. I think I caught most of it, but, you know, we can bring Tom in. He can tell us.
If you really want to know what PFOS is, I'd recommend you go back and watch utility board meetings because they go into great detail over PFOS.
I heard those are online, too, so that'll be, I'll have to look up. All right. Consent agenda. Entertain a motion?
I motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? If not, a last for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mrs. Harris?
So we have a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Jolla amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code regarding expedited review for affordable housing projects. Sounds very exciting, doesn't it? For what it's worth, Title 17 is the zoning code for the City of La Jolla. So they're amending the zoning code specifically to allow housing projects to have a faster review method.
If so, now it's going to say something about this.
Come on down.
Again, I didn't know you were here. Sorry. I don't look like a school crossing guard right now. I just wanted to talk about one thing. Three of you guys are on the planning committees, so you know a lot about this. There's one small discrepancy in the definition that will need to be changed before the second reading. Yes, I realized this after I sent it over to Southeast Colorado Rural Housing Authority. Anyway, the discrepancy is the, under the definition of affordable housing unit, it talks about 100% or less of the area median income for rentals. That should actually be for owners. So 100% should be for owners, and then 60% should be for rentals. So that just needs to be switched. Otherwise, everything looks good.
Can we do a friendly amendment at this point? So it's one less thing we have to do next time?
We have something to add. Do we need to first go, do you want to read what the sentence, how the sentence would read?
Yeah, which section is it?
Because it's in the definition, right?
Correct. Under definitions, it says affordable housing unit, in quotation marks. If you go, it says means a dwelling unit which is available for purchase on terms that would be affordable to housing households based on Otero County's AMI's earning 100% or less of the area median income for owners, not rentals. Or earning 60% or less of the area median income for not ownership, but for rentals.
We got to re-flip.
Just got to flip those two. That's it.
Do you want to add anything else?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion, though?
Not yet. But we can, we can talk, it's Bob's rules. We can have discussion before motion. So when they do make a motion, if they want to amend it to Martin's? Go ahead.
I just want to say that this has been discussed in three different meetings that I've been in personally, and probably more than that. We had a special session where the primary conversation was signs, but we did discuss why this was necessary. And this one, there's nothing, this is to comply with a statewide ordinance, but I just, I want to assure people, it looks like we're being casual about this. We are not. It has been discussed twice at the planning committee and also at that special meeting that we had a couple months ago, so.
And the planning meetings are online. You can go back and find those. This special meeting was not.
Been talked about a couple of times, and we're still finding things that are not accurate. I entertain a motion?
I motion. I'll second.
Do they have to add the...
Yeah. I motion for the first reading and ordinance in the City Council of the City of La Jolla amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code regarding expedited review for affordable housing projects.
Changes?
With the changes, the two changes that Martin mentioned, swapping owners and renters on that paragraph.
Thank you. Lisa, you still second it?
Yeah, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, a last for your vote? And that passes unanimously. Yes, Harris?
And next, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Jolla amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code regarding sign standards. This is that exciting meeting that Councilwoman Rickoff was mentioning. It was riveting.
Actually, it was quite interesting. I think the way I look at some of our businesses now, as I drive around town, I notice things that I weren't exactly on my radar before, so. And just really appreciate, there were several people in town that aren't here that participated. Gary's here. There are a lot of people there that participated pretty thoroughly in this conversation. And it was a good example of a community effort, to me, of getting the right people at the table to have a conversation. So I appreciate that.
Signs are so much more than just signs. You start with looking at height and space that they're onings. All right, I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Jolla amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code regarding sign standards.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? If not, a last for your vote? And that passes unanimously. All right. Committee and board reports.
Planning literally these two issues. So we did meet. You can watch it all online. It was a pretty basic meeting. Nothing else to report on that one.
City manager report.
All right. Good evening. So first off, the library, like they do every month, they got their calendars out. These are all online as well for all the different exciting things that are going on. You doing it, Adrian?
I am.
Thank you, sir. All the different exciting things they do have going on. One thing I will mention or highlight on the calendar is on the 13th, the Free Legals Clinic that they have are going to be phone calls only since the library has actually closed that day. So, yeah, you can still sign up, but there are going to be phone calls only. October 19th to 25th is Friends of Library Week, and the Friends are celebrating 30 years and holding silent auctions the 20th to 25th, as well as a couple of authors that are going to be coming in. So again, I would encourage everyone to go by the library, pick up your Friends of the Library registration form, fill it out. I got mine filled out, and we'll turn it in tomorrow. There are different levels that you can support the library and be associated with the Friends of the Library. On Thursday, the 23rd, 4 to 6, Lost Sand Creek Science with Mike and Chuck Bowen. The authors will be there talking about it. And then on the 31st, they are going to be having Halloween goodies going, or Halloween trees going on all day from 9:00 to 6:00. This week is Fire Prevention Week. The Fire Department has, we have our safety trailers out of various different schools, not only here in La Jolla. They're going to be also over events, NOLA, McLeve, Swing, Sharaw. Total, there are looking to be about 650 kids that they'll have in front of them this week talking about fire safety. The Fire Department will also be doing Halloween candy stuff at the station during the day on the 31st. on the 31st. So once you go to the library, drop over here to the Fire Department, get some more goodies for the kiddos. On the PD side of things, October 10th, Homecoming Parade starting at 1:00 PM. Then Saturday, they will be doing, helping out with the tree at Walmart. So before you come to the library and the Fire Department, go over to Walmart and get some more candy for the kiddos. Also have a bunch of different vendors for different types of food over there as well. On October 31st, Halloween, the Elks have their annual party at the Lahana High School gym starting at 6:00 PM. So again, if you're tracking right, we're going to go library, we're going to go Fire Department, we're going to go high school, before that, go to, sorry, we lost track of all of it. Walmart.
And they go to the dentist.
Yeah, I know, yeah, dentist is one that's definitely coming in November, right? Is November National Dentistry about this? If not, it should be, right? November 1st, right, every year. The Senior Center, the lunch for this month will be on October 16th, is enchiladas. If you've never been to one of those, they are, I have not had a bad meal yet over there and it's $3 to go over there and eat, so invite all your friends to go over there and support Senior Center. And then surprise, surprise, the Senior Center is going to be having a Halloween party as well on the 30th. So again, I don't want to run through the list again, I think you all got it already. I think at this point that there's going to be lots of candy, lots of places going on during the Halloween week. Parson rank, we have kindergarten through second grade basketball registration that has started and it will run through the end of the month. On the wastewater side, they've been doing some replacement of membranes over at ROB. And again, Tom gets super technical with stuff sometimes, so I won't get into the weeds on that. Seasonal maintenance going on as well. And we've replaced two fire hydrants here, fire hydrants here recently. And motor pulls continue to handle large repairs to include multiple air conditioners and hydraulic systems. On the streets engineering side, sanitation as well. This, we're doing our citywide cleanup, so it's open every day of the month, except for Sundays, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Bring your stuff over that you want to get rid of. Martin's taking everything this year, apparently. He's super excited about it too. The trail, the sidewalk trail we have going on on 10th Street is still in the process of being worked on and hoping for this project to be done by the end of the week. Then there's three big projects still need to be finished before the end of the year. Sixth Street by the library, 14th Street, water cuts need to be fixed in the Plaza Building, work needs to be completed, doing some paving stuff down there. On the HR side of things, we are currently advertising for police department and electric department positions. And by the end of the week, all departments should be trained in Narcan administration. One other thing I will note on the 20th is when we're looking at doing the bus tour for everybody, we're looking at probably 4:30-ish on the 20th. So again, be the bus tour, then come back, be back in time for the council meeting at 6:00. If there, again, if there are any places that anyone specifically wants to go look at, please let me or Brock know. Right now, we've narrowed it down to about 20 to 25 different spots that we're going to be taking you all to. Outside of that, that's all I have. Let's see if anybody has any questions, I think.
Any questions for Michael? All right. Community events for council report.
Just a couple of things. International Food Night, I know we already, we just voted that they can have a liquor license, so all the more reason to put it on your calendar. That's going to be on a Friday this year, November 7th, to support the international students who are at Otero College. I think there's also basketball games on Halloween at Otero, so you can stop up there too, and costume contests and everything up there. So I'm going to be out of town next Monday and won't be here for my second week or three listening meeting. I'd be happy to reschedule if you want to talk to me, you know where to find me. Otherwise, it will resume on November 10th. So I think that's all I've got.
Oh, we have the Trick or Treat Street or the Lahana Chamber, it's all over Lahana, downtown.
Try that to the list.
Inspiration Field has one going on the 30th.
Trunkertree.
The trunkertrees.
Yes, yes.
And then the Inspiration Field is also having their annual Monster Bash on the 24th for anyone that wants to dress up as an adult. Good, Michael?
Why are you looking at me like that?
I think this weekend is Costco's Bling and Bling or what is it?
The 11.
Yeah, Boots and Bling.
Sold out.
Sold out.
There you go. Any other community events that we need to know about? All right, governing body report.
I just want to say thank you so much to everybody in this community, Tarantula Fest. We had people from all over, not just Colorado, but the United States. You can't tell how many people came up to me and were like, this is amazing, we've never seen anything like this. And you know, it's kind of second nature to us to see spiders all over the place, but they think it's just the greatest thing that's ever happened. You know, I know how big the Tarantula Committee is. They're small, but they're mighty and I thank them, I thank tourism and everything that they're doing to put Lahana on the map for something like that. I also thank the Chamber for all the events that they do as well, too. It's all a team effort here, it's not one versus the other, so thank you for that. And thank you for the community for being nice to all the out-of-town visitors that come in and, you know, frequent the hotels, the restaurants and all of that stuff. It takes a lot and it takes all of us, so thank you for that. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight and spoke, thank you for everything you do in the community. And you know, there's some tough conversations that might need to be had, but we'll have them and we'll work on them together, so keep showing up, keep talking to us and letting us know your concerns. I also did go to the presentation last night about farmland direct to possibly opening type of a co-op here in Lahana. It was a really good presentation. It's still a long way away from coming to fruition, but those kind of things, you know, it starts with an idea. It starts with somebody getting out there and saying, hey, why don't you look at this? Why don't you do this? And then someday, you know, it moves along a little bit further, but it takes people getting active and doing the work up front. And it's not always fun, but it's worth it in the end, so please keep showing up and please keep bringing us your ideas. I wasn't going to mention it, but there was a high school football game, which is a rivalry game called the Whistle Game, which was in Lamar. And the high school boys did a great job in bringing the whistle back to Lahana. The final score was 21 to 12. And every, well, past year, I was on the first end of the losing side of that bet. Me and the mayor of Lamar make a bet, a friendly bet, where the losing mayor has to wear the opposing team's shirt and hat at their council meeting. So I get to wear a Lahana one this year, but at the 13th in Lamar, Kirk will be wearing the Lahana shirt and hat, gifted by me personally, so.
Mr. Ram, will they be having their meeting on the holiday?
Maybe the 14th then.
We should confirm just to make sure.
We should make sure that Adrian knows the date and the time so we can make sure that Kirk fulfills his end of the deal there. Did you hear who won that game, Martin?
Nope.
Well, I thank you all again for coming out and...
Joe, sorry, the art project, it got, I think it's overshadowed. I can't say enough about tarantulas. Tarantulas are, the festival's amazing, everybody's part of it, but just a quick shout out to, I think we had over 50 artists in town making art. I think it's also another very interesting and unique aspect of what happens in Lahana and it all happens on the same weekend, it's a bit of a whirlwind. So thank you to everybody who did everything for the weekend, but shout out to the art project as well.
There's some great murals down there.
Seen the marble of the march, now look at it. All right.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you all for coming up, this meeting's adjourned.